Okay, we'll close this special session to order.
Good evening, Council.
Kathy Kleinbaum, take it away.
So I'm here tonight with Molly Neber, who's the project manager from MidPEN Housing. And we're here to provide an update on the status of our downtown redevelopment sites on that project, and also to get some really important direction from council on various issues as we're moving through the entitlement process, and also looking at our project financing. So we have a series of questions we'll be asking the council at the end of the meeting. We'll first walk through our presentation, and then we'll come back to the list of questions, and hopefully we can go through them one by one.
Okay.
First, a good update. The downtown San Mateo Opportunity Sites development is progressing on schedule towards a 2021 construction start. So some of the key accomplishments to date, after being selected in April 2018 as the developer, we've completed most of our due diligence and community outreach. We're also towards the end of the CEQA-NEPA process, which is anticipated to conclude in February. We have submitted an entitlement application, and that is preparing us for March 2020, so March of next year, Planning Commission hearing, followed by an anticipated June 2020 city entitlement vote. Once that vote happens, the MidPEN team will be pencils down as we complete our financing step, so putting together all the sources of funds needed to make this project possible, and also work very diligently to prepare thorough construction drawings for a building permit application in February of 2021. Our target construction start date is October 2021. There have been multiple developments over the past year that we've identified through our due diligence work that have introduced new opportunities and constraints for this project. And the purpose of the following slides is to provide a pretty quick overview of several of these developments, and a more in-depth overview of the two related to income targeting, number four, and new housing legislation, number five. These developments relate to site issues, sustainability targets, construction phasing, and as I mentioned, the unit mix and the housing legislation. Starting with the site issues, there's kind of two categories. Environmental issues that we've identified affecting the residential site, and those are elevated soil gas levels on the residential site that may necessitate a vapor mitigation system, which is a ventilation system and mat underneath the residential structure in order to ensure that very low, but still concerning, levels of vapors don't enter into the building. And we'll work out the exact scope with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The other environmental issue is some lead that's been identified that will need to be off hold as a hazardous substance. The cost of these two environmental issues is around 1.3 million. That wasn't anticipated. On the garage site, the issue identified through due diligence is an approximately 12 and a half foot Union Pacific easement on the garage site. That is a different entity than the Joint Powers Board, which controls Caltrain, and less amenable to flexible solutions. As a result, we've skinned the parking garage, the 700 stall parking garage, through design changes in order to avoid reducing that target parking space count of approximately 700, and those design changes cost about 1.5 million. The past year, both the city and MidPEN have raised the bar in terms of our sustainability targets. You're all familiar with the REACH codes. The big impact of the updated REACH codes for this development is a significant increase in the electric vehicle requirements. And a big reason that matters is more electric vehicle capable parking stalls means a much bigger transformer, which is an expensive piece of utility equipment, and now has to be placed in a separate room inside the structure instead of underneath the sidewalk on the street for an additional cost over 250K. And then the additional wiring, and then newly required charging infrastructure for about 36 new EV-ready or EV stalls also has an added cost. It's something we're designing for, but not something that we anticipated since the original requirement was 10% of stalls. Another development on the sustainability front is something that MidPEN is very excited about. We've designed and built our first all-electric community in Sunnyvale. And the tipping point that enabled us to have our first all-electric community was innovating on the how you heat hot water front. And so instead of having a gas-powered boiler, which is what we have across our portfolio, here we're piloting an electric heat pump system. So you see some images of that on this slide. We'd like this DTSM community to be all-electric, and with your feedback, we continue to figure out how to adjust our design for this development in order to make an all-electric community here possible. A third update that I'd like to share is around the construction schedule. So through community outreach, and then also closer collaboration with our general contractor, there's some very clear trade-offs to having a phased construction schedule. So the RFP didn't indicate or didn't require to build the garage first, but based on outreach to the downtown business community, we heard very loud and clear from them that losing all of the existing parking on those two sites was a major concern because their workers park there and their customers park there. And as a result, we have been planning for a phased construction schedule, which the garage is built first, about 12 and a half months, once the garage is done, and then the residential starts, so only about 110 spots are lost at a given time. This would mean a 31-month construction period, which is almost three years. If we built those two structures concurrently, meaning both lots were offline for the majority of the 21-month construction period, we'd save about $2 million and reduce construction loan interest, and then also reduce construction supervision costs because all of our contractors come with a supervisor, and having that supervisor out there for an additional year is expensive. The downside would be we would have to work with the city to find other options for mitigating the impact of the lost parking on downtown businesses. And Kathy has some suggestions to share here.
And so we have been looking at possible considerations. You know, it's very early in the process, and we don't know necessarily exactly what we can put in place. But some very low-hanging fruit for consideration is we could be leasing some spaces and private properties to offset some of the parking demand. And there's different ways to structure that so that it's not necessarily private properties open to the public. We can assign spaces to permit parkers, so it's more of a targeted audience using those spaces. And I think there are some buildings that might be available midweek, and there are some that might be available on nights and weekends. We also can look at paying for valet parking in one or more of our lots. And we have had our parking consultant, Standard Parking, look at several of our lots, and there is an ability to increase capacity. And again, if we were to do that, we'd probably do that for the permit parkers, so the employees that work downtown that park for 10 hours at a time as opposed to having customers that come and go, being valet parked. So those are two options to increase parking supply. There's also possible mitigations that can be done to encourage people to drive less, which we can look at, including discounted transit passes or working with various employers. So there are options that we can look at. There will be some costs to these options, but I think it'll be significantly less than the $2 million that we could save.
I know it's difficult to predict, but the volume? What do you think you can do about how much parking you can get us?
Well, so there's 110 spaces that we would not have as a result of building them concurrently. So I think we could probably mitigate probably at least two-thirds of that. It really depends on the time period. I think on nights and weekends, we could probably mitigate all of it or more because there's a lot of office buildings that don't have anyone parking there after 6:00 PM. It might be a little bit more challenging, the midweek, midday options, but I do think that there are some options available.
Now, a key update, and this relates to income targeting. So we've jointly been spending a lot of time researching how this project could best serve public employees in a way that's consistent with the city goals. As you may recall, quarter of the units income target public employees. Some of the key updates that our research has identified is that area median incomes, so the median incomes for the San Mateo counties set by the state have increased more than 20% since the RFP was issued in 2017. In that same time period, city employee salaries have increased by less than half of that amount, by less than 10%. A second key takeaway from the research we've been doing is that a market analyst, conducted by a professional market analytics firm, found that approximately 80% of the target public employees earn a wage that's less than 80% of area median income, which for a one-person household in San Mateo County is currently about 90,000. So the majority of public employees that earn less than 80% of area median income. A survey that we conducted, and by we, I mean MidPEN, in collaboration with the city, the fire department, who circulated it to their employees, the county, who circulated it to their employees, the school district circulated it to their employees, and the high school district, who circulated it to their employees, we conducted this survey of public employees. 800 people responded. And a key takeaway of this survey was that there's limited demand for the proposed rents. So the survey was designed to gauge interest among public employees who are earning more than 80% of area median income, kind of that missing middle, if that population, as we thought of it, was truly interested in what we were offering. This public employee survey highlighted that these higher-earning public employees, so again, earning more than around 90,000 for a one-person household or around 100,000 for a two-person household, they preferred an older suburban San Mateo apartment for more amenities to what we were offering. So an older suburban San Mateo apartment like Hillsdale Gardens, built in the 1970s, fewer units, walk-up, the rent is around 2,800. Our proposed rents for the downtown San Mateo Opportunity Sites for two-bedroom unit, targeting this higher-moder income tier, is $3,000. Many people said they preferred, or the majority said they preferred, that suburban San Mateo unit for the suburban San Mateo rent. Just for context, our rents are based on a significant discount to market. So a luxury apartment in San Mateo, for example, at Mode would cost about 3,500. This indicates to us that the price is very important to these higher-moder income public employees. They're not going to move unless it's a really good deal. And what they define as a really good deal is different from what we're offering. Something else that they noted to us in the survey is that they have a lot of preferences for amenities. So perhaps they would pay for this newer luxury San Mateo apartment because it comes with amenities that we're not offering at downtown San Mateo, like multiple parking spaces per unit, private outdoor space. It's not adjacent to railroad tracks.
For a pool.
Nobody specifically commented on the pool, but we got a lot of other comments. This research that I just reviewed indicates that we could serve this target population of public employees through 100% tax credit community. And there's a lot going on on this slide, so I want to take a few minutes to break it down for you. In yellow at the top is 2017. So this is data from when the RFP was issued. It's at a time when, in 2017, we couldn't get tax credits, so our kind of magic money for affordable housing projects on households with incomes greater than 60% AMI. And the income levels in the county that would qualify somebody for a unit were more than 20% less than what they are now. So based on those two factors, there were a number of public employees in income categories that would have made them ineligible for a tax credit unit. In blue, on the bottom half of this slide, you see those same income categories, so 50% of median income up to 120% median income, the corresponding maximum income for a one-person household, so a two-year increase of more than 20%. And then highlighted in yellow are some examples of jobs where that one-person household with that job in 2017 is now in a lower-income category than they were two years ago. So we are seeing job functions shift into categories that make them low-income where they previously were not low-income. An important point on this slide is this is for single-occupant households. So the scenario would be that the firefighter who earns 99,000 as an entry-level firefighter in the city of San Mateo today, that that firefighter is the only person in their household. So if that firefighter was the only person in their household, then they would be categorized as 100% of area median income. However, if that firefighter had one other person in their household, for example, a child, then they would actually move into a two-person occupant income category, so a higher threshold, and they would count as a tax credit-eligible household income because the threshold for a two-occupant household is around $100,000.
So another really big change is just very recently, I think even within the last month, the state passed a whole slew of new housing legislation, which will actually be going over later tonight in the main session. But one of the bills that passed is AB 1763. And this legislation allows for increased height and density for 100% affordable housing within a half-mile transit, which this project happens to qualify for. So we are looking for council direction on whether to further analyze whether or not to look into applying this legislation to this project. There are various implications for this project. So, you know, we haven't done any architectural studies or anything like that, just using the most basic analysis of how many units are currently being provided per floor of housing. We think that if you added one to two stories on this project, you could get between 30 to 70 additional housing units. So the 70 would equal a two-story height increase. There would be some delays to this project for certain. We're pretty far along in entitlements process. We've done all the CEQA work. We'd have to go back and do some additional design. We'd have to redo some of the CEQA analysis. So there definitely would be a six-to-nine-month delay in where we are in our entitlement schedule. In order to do this, we'd really need to think about whether or not the parking provided by the housing units could be less than a one-to-one ratio, or whether you want to reduce the number of public parking spaces provided by this project. Currently, there's 535 spaces, 235 replacing the spaces that used to be on the two-surface lots and a 300 additional spaces. So that is a consideration. There are ways to target the housing units, so maybe they're targeted more towards populations that are less likely to drive for the additional units, such as seniors or other special need populations. And also, I do want to emphasize, is one of your other options, where you're talking about whether or not this project should be 100% tax credit. This scenario with additional units, there's already a pretty sizable gap on this project unless we do tax credits. This will likely not work unless it's a 100% tax credit project. So we are, on this, going to be seeking council direction on whether to study this. We're not making a council decision tonight on whether to do it, but we definitely, it'll take some time and money just to even study it. So that's something we wanted to emphasize. Another decision point that we'll be talking through the council is on looking at various internal fee waivers to reduce the costs to this project. So currently, the internal plan check and building permit fees, and this is the staff time to review the documents for this public-private partnership, is estimated at 875,000. So staff would recommend that council looks at this fee for this project, given that it's a public-private partnership and we're building a public parking garage. Another consideration, which the council may want to consider more broadly for all affordable projects, is looking at the way that the park's impact fee is credited. So this project will be paying impact fees and paying its fair share for the infrastructure demands that it generates. The park impact fee has a fairly complex calculation, which I won't get into the full detail of. But one of the parts of the calculation is it does allow for credits if there's amenities provided onsite that reduce demand on parks. But it only will give that credit if a certain threshold of amenities is met. So this project, for example, will have an onsite playground. It'll have a community room for its residents. It'll have a fitness room, a room for after-school programs. But because it doesn't have quite enough square footage, it wouldn't qualify for any credits against the park impact fee. So we would ask that council consider waiving the minimum threshold and allow whatever space this project has onsite to be allowed to be considered towards a credit. And that credit, in this situation, a rough estimate, it would be about a $250,000 reduction in that 3.3 million dollar fee that would otherwise be owed.
Kathy, not a total elimination, just a $250,000 reduction?
Reduction of a 3.3 million dollar fee. Dropping down from 3.3 to close to 3 million. Another important consideration that's really critical to discuss at this point in the project before we move further in the entitlements process is the community serving space that the city had asked the developer to include in the garage as part of our request for proposals process. So this space originally was going to be a 2,000-square-foot space. It's now been reduced to 1,200 square feet due to the need to accommodate the transformers for the electric vehicle chargers. The concept that we had discussed for the space was that during the daytime, it would be, or morning and early afternoon, it would be used by the Workers' Resource Center. And in the afternoon and evening, it could be available for community use for our community meetings or other programming that may occur there. We have talked extensively to our Parks and Rec Department, and they do feel that managing this off-site space will be a challenge to them. And if the Workers' Resource Center is not located there, it certainly would be a very difficult space for them to manage 100% of the time or find productive uses for. In addition, if the council does consider concurrent construction, or even if they don't, the Workers' Resource Center will likely, if we're going to keep it moving, will need to be relocated during construction. It is very challenging to relocate something like that for a year or a year and a half and to relocate it back. It's very impactful to its business model. And the rent at some of the spaces that it might be eligible for is, in comparison to the cost to build the permanent space, is not that high. We looked at some options that were available on North Ample, and the rent was, you know, 30 to 60,000 dollars, which could cover roughly 10 years of operation. So we want to bring this forward to council for consideration on whether or not the community room should be included in the garage.
So, in the final slide that I'll be presenting, while Kathy presents her final slide and we wrap up, I want to just recognize that also from MidPEN, we have our chief real estate officer, Jan Lindens, all here. So when we open it up for questions and discussion, she's another resource. So the various updates that we've presented have financing implications. And so how the council decides to move forward helps us figure out how to address the project financing gap. Currently, we have an $8 million financing gap. For a project of this magnitude, it's not a gap that keeps us up at night. But given we're at a juncture where decisions we make can significantly reduce that gap, it's important to bring it to your attention tonight and talk about these options. In the base cases I mentioned, we have an $8 million gap. If the project becomes 100% tax credit, so the maximum income of any unit is 80% of area median income, our gap would fall by 5 and 1/2 million. We believe that we could achieve this, achieve this 100% tax credit units in a way that's consistent with the city's goals for serving public employees based on the analysis presented. Another option for reducing this gap would be concurrent construction. As I mentioned, this would save about $2 million, a conservative estimate, simply by reducing the construction loan interest owed and the construction supervision cost. A third option is increasing city subsidies. So an increased city subsidy on top of the 9.5 million offered through the RFP to address the residential environmental issues or the parking site constraint issues would reduce the gap by the co-measured amount, so 1 million and 1/2 to 2 million. These options don't have to exist in isolation. They could be combined to reduce the current gap, which would be a great position to be in at this stage of a project.
And the project will still continue to look for outside funding sources, as is typical for an affordable housing project. So these aren't the only options out there, but it's hard to know at this state of the project what might be available. There's new programs that come up, others that, some are competitive, so you apply, and you don't always necessarily get the funding. So there's still a lot of question marks in play. So here is the list of the eight specific questions that we're seeking direction for council tonight. They don't necessarily match the order in the slide, and I apologize for that. But the eight questions are whether or not the housing and the parking garage should be built concurrently, whether the project should target income, revise the income targets to serve only up to 80% of area median income, whether the city is willing to consider waiving a portion of the development review fees, whether the city is willing to look at the proposal to amend the park impact fee to allow this project to get credit for the amenities provided onsite, whether or not the community rooms should be included in the project, whether the project should be designed to be 100% electric, which actually, the good news is, doesn't have an additional cost. So that's one easier question. Whether the council wants to further explore the options available to this project by the new state legislation. And is the city council willing to commit additional city resources to this project if needed? Although at this point in time, we're not asking for a direct commitment of any dollar amount.
Yeah, what I want to do is I want to do questions, and then when we, we're going to go to public comment. When we move back from public comment, I'm going to pick at some low-hanging fruit and ask the council some initial questions so that we can get through maybe some of the easier questions and then move on to the other questions. Questions? Okay.
For the all-electric, so I'm a little bit confused because I thought I read in here that it was, you estimated it was a $2 million cost, but then you said it was not a cost.
So it's no additional cost to be all-electric to go to net zero, which would provide us the onsite solar to... Yeah.
Okay. Another, a question on the AB 1763. So costs have gone up by 8 million so far in this delay. Is there, do we face a significant risk of delaying the building, starting it, starting buildings sooner rather than later? Or later rather than sooner in terms of costs continuing to escalate?
Oh, in terms of cost escalation? Well, we at MidPEN are estimating about 1% per month in terms of construction cost escalation based on our experience in the market the last couple of years. So there is that element that we model and would model in more detail exploring this option. And one of the reasons that we say 100% tax credit is key to making this, being that AB 1763 in the realm of feasibility.
And that 1% is compounded?
So I would say we're 24 months from construction. So based on the last pricing set, applying about a 24% escalation to our general contractor's cost estimate.
So is that compounded or not?
So it's not compounded.
Didn't sound like it was, but Jan shook her head and said yes, it was.
Molly's right.
Oh, it's not compounded, okay. Okay?
Can I start with number eight? So if we end up with a gap in funding, we're going to be staring at each other at a table, wondering whether we can start this project, and the city could be in a position where if we want it to happen, we've got plenty at that moment?
Yes, that'll definitely, you know, if we come to the point where it's time to start construction and all the other possible funding sources have tapped out and council selected not to move forward with some of these cost-saving or finance options, then yes, we'll probably be in that position.
So if we can save money, we're saving ourselves money. So we can save money, we're saving ourselves money, and making sure that this project is going to get built, hopefully.
And I, again, there's, the, the field that we work in is very dynamic, so there's often changes in financing sources. We're anticipating a significant contribution from the county and have had two awards of that total anticipated award of just shy of 9 million. But again, that's competitive. This is a great project for the county, so we're hopeful. We are anticipating 5 million from the state. Again, that's competitively awarded funds, but we anticipate that will be a fit. And there may be additional sources of financing that develop, especially next year when we're really in the depths of all of our financing applications. But at the same time, as I mentioned, we're bringing this up now not because we think there are absolutely no other options, but rather, we've done a lot of work that's identified new cost sources, new sources of costs, new options for reducing those costs, or a different approach to putting the pieces together, and that's why we'd like to have those conversation, that conversation.
Let me say it differently. Our interests are aligned, as far as, our interests are aligned, so we're on the same page. We want to save money on this project, make sure that it gets built, and, and bring down the cost where we can. So, if I could follow up with, my question was, am I understanding that right? So, does, my next question has to do with the 80% AMI. So this is, this is a change, and there was a lot of information on that slide. Am I understanding it correctly that it captures the vast majority of public employees?
It, it does capture a very significant proportion of public employees, not just for the city, but also the school districts and the county health department that's located here. So 80% was what the estimate.
I think the quote was even firefighters.
Even some firefighters, yes.
Which was impressive. So changing it to 80% doesn't exclude public employees, it's not going to, it's not going to make it harder? Is that what you're saying? It's not going to make it harder for us to, to fill these units?
No, we ended the phase that it'll make it easier to fill the units. A concern that, one of the concerns that really was an impetus for this research was wanting to avoid vacancy, to make sure there are enough public employees who wanted to live in those units that we were setting aside as non-tax credit units to have maximum, to have maximum flexibility, you know, in terms of income targeted, and thereby foregoing tax credits as a source of money to help pay for those units. So those units kind of have to pay for themselves in terms of the rents helping to pay off the loan to build those units.
Let me just jump in. Isn't it true that change has already happened? We're just figuring out how to deal with it, right? And the way to deal with it might be to go 100% tax allocation funding.
Yeah, if I could just add to that.
You can, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
The, the opportunity that we have is that because of the change in the program expanding the incomes that qualify, combined with the increase in median income, which is really unprecedented to see this level of income. And the, the issue there is that the, the county median income is going up at a rate that's, that's greater than people's actual incomes are. So it allows us to be able to capture a broader range of the folks that we originally wanted to serve and get the benefit of the tax credit equity.
Right. I recognize that, I just, there is a different quality of employee that we are talking about. So when I look here and here, th- those are different folks.
Mm-hmm.
And in words, policeman dropped off. Right?
No.
Yes?
These fish batteries.
They're right here at 80%. I don't see a policeman.
Well, so you're right, Mary.
Well, so if I could take, if I could take this one, Molly. So the, this is showing this, the income for a single earner household. So in this example, you see the police officer there, there at 100% of area median income right now. However, if they were married and their spouse wasn't working, or if they had a child, then they would qualify. So it's, 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 and here you can see the actual median incomes by household size, so on this chart right here. So this just illustrates that as, if it was a single police officer, that's right. But if they're in a family without another wage earner, then they would qualify.
I follow. I just want to be very careful when we're talking about percentages of public employees and the types of public employees that we're talking about. Because when this group met initially, we were, you know, we really wanted to take a look at teachers. And I recognize now we have new information that says the taste for this kind of product might be not as appealing to the folks we were drilling down on. But let's be very careful when we talk about percentages, what the quality of the particular type of employee is, so that everybody's on the same page as to who we're helping and how we can help them. Okay, you have other questions?
Yes, so it sounded like you had concern about, this building has one-to-one parking ratios to, to units, and if we increase the number of units, could we maintain the same ratio? You're not, are you suggesting that we go below one-to-one ratio?
We wouldn't, we can't make the garage taller, and we, we anticipate that we can't make, go underground under the residential for both cost reasons, but also because of the anticipated environmental mitigation system. That means that the parking ratio for the, those added households, the parking ratio has to be reduced and/or the residence, resident parking increases and the public parking count decreases.
We could maintain one-to-one, a one-to-one ratio per unit with, I think you said, we could add 70 units if we added two floors, which would be something like 238 units. So we could have 238 spaces dedicated to the residents, and we'd still have 450-plus units dedicated to the public.
That'd be an option.
Which is way more spaces than we currently have for the public. Yes?
It is an option. So there's, you can either lower the ratio, you can do accommodation in the middle, too. So you can have a slightly lower ratio of parking for the housing units, or you could reduce the number of public parking spaces provided by this project. All that would have to be studied if we looked into this further.
There's going to be a TDM for this building?
Yes.
So these people are all going to have access to bike lockers and, and bus passes and Caltrain passes and whatever else we need to do to make these either one-car households or zero-car households, is that right?
There's, there's a variety of solutions. The, the bike parking requirement, it's, we're already bike parked more than one-to-one, that's a city requirement. The transit passes is something that we could explore, and there's a cost associated with that, but it's certainly an option that we offer other communities, including those in San Mateo.
Public employees already have access to free transit passes, so you could just have more public employees?
Yeah, that's, that's some, yeah, as I mentioned, we, we have transit passes that are other communities here, and that, that's helped. Another thing that Kathy mentioned, but just to highlight, is there's options around the composition of any added units. So if those include studios or one-bedrooms, which tend to be most attractive to seniors, and then, or if we wanted to include some more special populations, for example, adults with intellectual disabilities who often don't have a vehicle or are not driving, there's multiple ways to think about the added unit parking trade-off.
Sean, can I ask about AB 1763? Is, is everything correct that we've heard so far that this project could go up to seven stories and 238 units, give or take?
Yes.
And at seven stories, it's still within the maximum height under Measure P, right? Measure P goes up to 75 feet in certain places?
It does go up to 75 feet in certain places. This is one parcel over from a place where it does.
Right.
So it does on the other side of the railroad, but not on this side, but, but it is within that height envelope that Measure P more generally allows.
Thank you, that's how I was trying to say. Sorry, I've been throwing out these numbers. I was doing the math. Am I correct, 238, if you went up to seven stories and?
We think that we can add up to about, up to 70-something units. And again, Kathy mentioned, if there was an interest in this from council, we could go back to our design team and say, give us permutations, and...
Depending on the kinds of units. Three, two, one.
Exactly.
But then you're talking about 59 units for public employees, yes?
There, we, we've been, 25% public employee preference units is what we've been anticipating, and that would apply to the added units as well.
Okay. I think I addressed the, the few, I had questions about fee rates, but basically, if you pay less, then we have to work less harder trying to bridge the gap there. I'm open.
There are questions?
The question about Samaritan House? Have you reached out to our stakeholders to see whether Samaritan House?
This is a recommendation that came up in jointly with Samaritan House.
Okay.
So, so they have said that it makes sense to them to relocate to a new location and not necessarily come back to the garage.
That was my last question. Thank you, Madam.
Mm-hmm. I have a question on the, the parking for the additional stories. And this concept that it would be, increase the number of public employees. If you didn't provide parking for those two additional stories, it would be public employees, it would not have parking available to them, correct?
Uh, not necessarily. We would have to decide of that total unit mix and say, we added 70, and we ended up with, with 230 or so units. And we'd still have a mix of unit sizes, studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms. And we work with our property management to make a recommendation on how to allocate the parking spaces amongst those unit sizes, given the variation in size and target populations.
And there'd still be 164 parking spaces provided for those units, so they could be distributed accordingly.
No matter what the, yeah, because I had thought for the two extra floors, you were trying to go after a certain population, it wasn't necessarily driving population.
I, I could just, Molly, I missed a bit. Not necessarily, that's just one way that we can potentially mitigate the demand for the parking.
Right.
But we feel pretty confident that even if we got to a less than one-to-one parking ratio in the way that we were just describing, that there's all the other mitigations that we can put in place to make it work, given the site's location proximity to transform.
Fair enough. And, let me just get to you one second, and if we did have folks with special needs, is there an ability to provide services onsite, and how would we be providing the real estate for that?
So for, the organization that we would work with, if we had a handful, so less than a dozen units targeting adults with intellectual disabilities, we work with Housing Choices. And in addition to the family service coordinator, and then the supportive service coordinator that's included in our budget, in addition to, to that resident services staff, we'd be working with Housing Choices and then their, their counterparts in the community, including in San Mateo, to provide that net. And those target households come with services, and there's, they also have a model for coming with additional rent subsidy if needed. Housing Choices often, also will say that these folks are already members of the community, and they all, many of them have aging parents. And so there's kind of a, there's, there's a network of services, they're relatives in addition to the services that are provided through partners of this Housing Choices program. Yeah, if you have anything to add to that.
Are they onsite? Are they onsite? Clear to me.
Services would be on-site, yes.
Okay.
And we have enough community space there where we could accommodate.
Okay, that's it.
Careful service.
Okay.
Do you see that currently a foster square?
Um, he provides services onsite, yes. We don't have anyone, any adults with intellectual disabilities there, but we have services that are provided onsite, yes.
Could that include childcare?
I think that's already provided.
Yes.
It, it cannot. Childcare has a lot of special restrictions and requirements for early outdoor play areas and designated spaces, yeah.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick follow-up question on the, on the parking, the balance between for the units and public. Is there, would there be any possibility of doing a blending parking where you're trying to maybe set aside some that it might not be used during the day versus during the night, where you can kind of pull them together and maybe add some efficiency there?
So theoretically, it's possible. Our zoning code currently is written very strictly to require secured parking for residential units, so that's something that maybe could be looked at.
Are we the ones who change them?
Yeah. Couldn't it be like, couldn't it be public parking that enable?
Could be visitors or like silver.
Well, they, they would be able to have preference on that public parking or something.
There's, there's lots of ways to skin that cat, sorry.
Would it be possi, much, yeah, would it be possible to operate secure parking that has one main secure, secure parking area at all hours, and another one that kicks in and locks at a certain hour in the evening?
Quite possible, very true.
Okay, that would be a good way to do the segregated parking, though. Okay, thanks. No, I don't have any other questions.
Good questions.
Appreciate the presentation.
I have a question about the, the, the status of the public, and if there are any, any other comparable sites that are yet to be developed that are even, you know, in, sort of on the horizon, and how unusual is this in terms of the opportunity?
We don't own any other sites that we're anticipating being able to develop in this way, and so it is, there, this opportunity is fairly limited.
Once in a lifetime, did you want to say once in a lifetime?
Well, we had, we've had other ones that have come out, like the former police station. When we relocated our police station, that was a fantastic opportunity.
Yeah, who developed them?
Mid-Penn.
I think because we kept the property as it related to this one, and we've kept the properties relates to Bay Meadows, whatever the useful life is of this building, the property will remain with the city for development at a later time, who knows? Okay, with that, no more questions? We'll send it out to public comment. We, you've got about eight questions for us to get through, so I want to make sure that we get to those in due time. How many speaker slips, Madam?
Right now, zero.
Clear? Okay. Got two? Okay. And three.
So, in a minute, if I could please ask you, I'll call you in order right there. At the end of the table is a microphone. It's very difficult to hear if you're just talking from the room, so we do ask you to speak into the microphone there. Okay, so if I could have Lori Watanuki first?
Okay, Lori Watanuki. I'm on the board of the Central Neighborhood Association. It was mentioned that there's going to be a five-foot wall. And is this next, going to be next to the transformer station as well? Or is it going to be next to the railroad tracks?
I'm sorry.
A five-foot wall?
Can you just tell me about the wall next to the transformer?
There's, there's, there's no wall next to the transformers. What you perhaps are referencing is the 55-foot wall on the north side of the parking garage, which is the side of the parking garage adjacent to the PG&E substation that's currently off Fifth Avenue. And that is going to be a concrete masonry wall, which is necessary for secure design purposes.
Okay, so this is on...
Just, we'll start your time again, Lori. I want you to get your full two minutes, and staff is answering your questions, so take it away.
Okay. Anyway, residents were concerned about this nature of the plain wall, and is there anything you can do to make it so this wall is not plain? If it's next to the transformer station, couldn't it be a higher wall? Can you put some plantings next to the wall, so there's no graffiti? Especially if this is next to the transformer station, if at all. The second question is, the garage and the housing need to be built concurrently to save the $2 million. We would eliminate the 1,200-square-foot community space for the Worker Resource Center and save the $500,000, and explore a centralist option like Redwood City. Do not, we would like not to add more stories to the Mid-Penn project. We have concerns about the parking overflow into our neighborhood. The aesthetics, we are in the early stages, but three people at the library meeting requested to soften the look, and perhaps you can add some brick to warm up the building so it can blend into the surrounding neighborhood like the Wendy Hill project. So softening of the architecture would be requested. And there are concerns about option four, which is to add more county project-based Section 8 vouchers. We do have a concern about that. And the amount of police protection, we would have to, have to mitigate that situation. I think those were my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Jordan Grimes, Solitary Division.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm not really sure why we'd need more police presence to mitigate anything from Section 8 tenants, but that's neither here nor there. I'm a big fan of all of these changes, specifically the addition of a potential 70 extra units. I'd like the council to keep in frame of reference the other... I'd like the council to keep in frame of reference the other projects that the city has created with Mid-Penn, Peninsula Station, Delaware Station. Both of those are 68 units. Um, so this is literally the opportunity to get a whole nother Mid-Penn project, which I think is really, um, uh, I know "once in a lifetime" was used already, uh, I think it really is that. Also agree with Lori on the building being built, uh, the housing being built concurrently with the garage. I think that, uh, offers the best, uh, best solution for, for everyone downtown. And, um, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jerry Nugent.
Yes.
Yes, Jerry Nugent. I live on Delaware Street, not far from where this will be built, and, uh, to me, it's a, a wonderful opportunity. If we can put another two stories on it, it would improve my view, uh, and I would love that. But a couple things that are very important. Uh, first of all, uh, don't let the Worker Resource Center slip away just because a lot of pieces are moving around. Uh, it's extremely important to this community. It fulfills a service that's kind of invisible but hugely necessary. Uh, they keep hundreds of people off of the streets by helping them have jobs, and so, uh, again, it's not real visible, but if we lose that, um, we're losing something really, really important. Another point, uh, you know, to put as many units as we can, we don't have a lot of opportunities. There're not gonna be a lot of opportunities in the future. And so to not maximize the property, you know, someday we're gonna say, "Oh, you know, we could've done that," and we, and we didn't do it, and we're gonna, uh, really feel badly about that. And then another point, um, if you look at the income categories and, uh, you know, the, hitting the 80%, uh, from 17 to 19, we moved a whole slot. This isn't going to be coming online for another three years. We'll have probably moved at least another slot. You know, you can't say that for sure, but, you know, the way things are going, so that, um, you know, we're gonna be able to cover most all of our city employees, even that right now are not covered. So, uh, that's, that's a really nice opportunity. And then to be able to have tax credit financing for all of it is also huge. Be nice to get an understanding of what the savings are by increasing, you know, by doing 100% tax credit, because it's not just a savings today, it's a savings that goes way out into the future. So, uh, appreciate if we could, could look very closely and enthusiastically at that. Thank you.
And the speaker is Evelyn Stivers.
Hi, thank you so much. Uh, my name's Evelyn Stivers. I'm with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Uh, we work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality affordable homes. And I know it's gonna be really surprising to you, but we would really like the, to look at the higher density and more units on the site. It is hard to find public land, it's really hard to find sites. Right now, the, the, the region is looking at our upcoming Rena. Every unit, every home that we don't plan for and have provided, we're, there's gonna be an expectation that we're gonna have to figure out where that's going to be, be built in the future. And this is a great opportunity for us to make the most of something that's already moving. And I, I am also concerned about the, the, the increased in time, increasing timeline, but, um, it seems worth it to look into it, right? But let's take the most, let's take this opportunity and really make the most of it. So thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Thank you. And Drew, were you, did you want to see? Oh, you did not, okay, all right. So we're gonna bring it back to public comment, I mean, back to public comments. Who are we? I'm gonna come sit with you. Uh, yeah, so let's, let's, um, let me, give me these, these a second here, and I think there are some that might be a little bit more, um, easier for us to just come to consensus on and tick them off. Let's go to, is it number seven easiest? No, I'm kidding. Um, how about number six? How do you feel about number six?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Number six, we're down.
That was pretty low.
We're down to seven. Okay, so, uh, do you, um, uh, let's see, should this be, should this be the first one allowed to each candidate? How about number three?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm okay with that, right? I mean, it's just money that we would charge and then, you know, have to pay, it's, it totally makes sense. And what about the, um, the park impact fee? It's a $250,000 item. Everyone can live with that?
Yes.
Okay, so, my God, three off, four to go. I like it. Okay, excellent. Um, I just wanna move the needle here.
On the park impact one, was that the one where you wanted to know also too, if we wanted to perhaps extend that to other projects?
To other affordable housing projects.
Yeah, I'm a yes on that one, too.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um, let's see. So I'm going to the, of the ones that might be a little more discussion, but, um, I think might be low-hanging fruit, I'm just gonna go out there on a limb. And that one relates to number one and the building concurrently.
Yes.
With the exploration to replace it. That's okay, I appreciate your enthusiasm, it's good, you're helping me. Um, I worry about our businesses, but I, I think we can think outside the box on that one. Okay.
I agree with Mayor.
So we're down to, what do you got? That was seven?
Number six, though.
And is there five, two left?
Yeah, no, there's number two.
Are there three left or two left?
There's number two, there's number five, seven and eight.
Oh, I thought we were doing better than that. Okay.
How about five?
Which one?
Five.
Five. I think we gotta get the stakeholders involved on that one.
So we have been working very closely with Samaritan House, and Samaritan House is supportive and, and co-recommended this direction.
Okay, all right. So is there, is there a, a, we don't have concurrents, you're anti?
Well, I'd say we don't need, we didn't remove in the project.
In the project, okay, we have concurrents, okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so, um.
Two, seven, eight.
Just seven and eight, okay.
Two, seven.
Two, seven and eight, okay. Let's talk about the, sorry, guys, I'm, um, I went out of order. I think we should talk about, um, two. Let's go to, I'm gonna go to two first.
Okay.
Um, where does everyone stand on number two? In the 80% of AMI as opposed to anything above? The evidence we heard was, hey, it's not appealable to the targets you want to go for, and you think you can reach a lot of people who's, uh, possibly do not go up with a median income. Those would be like your two arguments, right?
And market rents are fairly similar for older apartments that we would be able to charge.
I support number two.
You support number two? Support it?
Yes.
Support it? Okay. And we made that change. That was a big ticket item, folks. That was a big ticket item. All right, number eight, we, we're gonna do, we would commit the resources, but that's just not on the table at this point. Well, let's see where we are. I'm assuming everybody's gonna say, let's see where we are, right?
We just say, do we want them to study it or not? That's what they ask.
To commit additional resources?
It's just a willingness to consider another.
You can have so much county money, so much state money, they're not even gonna need it from us, but.
I agree, no, I actually got that impression, Molly, even though you, the tone of your voice was very positive. It was, I don't know why.
This project gets built one way or another.
Yeah, right. Um, so let's talk about the additional two, um, it would be two stories for 1763 because that gives you additional height. It's not an area that's already zoned for it. But the law, as such, if it passes, our city attorney, oh, has passed our city 36, could give you two more, um, as Mark Twain said, "Man, they ain't making it anymore."
I support it.
Um, what I should say is this, I would support looking at it, and I think I can live with the delay. But that's kinda where I am. I mean, I, was it Abby that said, "God, we got a great need now"? It does cause me a little consternation. You know, this, as is, is a bird in the hand. I think to look at it, we have to address other stakeholders and whatnot, but land is a rare commodity, so I, I'm struggling with the timing of it and getting all stakeholders involved. But I obviously see the good in it, of course. So what about you?
Yeah, I support, definitely support looking into it. I think this is a opportunity that we can't let go. Um, the other thing is, I would just also encourage, um, when you're looking into it, trying to not just add the two stories on, but trying to make it like attractively, adding a, sort of designing it completely over again instead of just, um, plopping the two stories on. I think that it could be a great opportunity to add this housing, but I wanna try to make it as attractive as possible.
Can I give a brief preamble? So I, I wanna thank Lori Watanuki for her comments, especially the shortening the construction, uh, which the Central Neighborhood seems supportive of, and I, I'm glad that we can accommodate. The plantings along the wall is something that I would be supportive of if we can do that. I don't know why we couldn't, so we should at least try to do that. Eliminating the garage common space, it sounds like the council agreed with that as well. And then, um, beautifying this project, I'll echo what Eric just said, that design matters and how this building looks for, for the central commu- central neighborhood, for, um, for all of the neighborhoods around here. I drive down this street every day, so this is a building we're all gonna be looking at, we want it to be as beautiful as possible. And I would echo what, what Lori said about how if you can make it as beautiful as the Windy Hill project, that was a big success, and, um, I look forward to sort of imitating that success and really changing the character of this neighborhood in a positive way for the whole, for the whole community. So I am a yes as far as two stories and more units.
I would follow up on the materials. I think when you go higher, it has to look homier. And so that's kind of my thought process as well. Warm materials, less stucco, I know I have very expensive tastes, doesn't have to be...
It's not supposed to be brick, but.
That may be. Reinforce brick, how's that? But that's kinda, you know, where I am with that as well. I, I, I wanna see it look purty. Okay.
I'm still a yes.
Still a yes, you're a yes.
I am.
Okay.